Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Since there is none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no changes or modifications to the agenda, move we approve it for Thursday, December 23rd.
We have a motion on Florida, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? All right, no internal budget revisions, we have change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie Delaguetti, prosecuting attorney for Megan Yates as a prosecuting attorney with an hourly, I'm sorry, with an annually salary of $71,500 effective January 3rd, 2022. Change in status received from Jen Swisher, 911 director for the following employees. They are receiving an anniversary date increase effective December 16th, 2021. Leanne Frye is going from $43,775 to $45,963. Ryan Schumate is going from $44,325 to $45,963. Moving on to the change of status received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Jason Owens. He is receiving a salary increase for obtaining state certified range instructor for handgun, rifle and shotgun. His salary will be going from $33,928 to $34,428 effective January 1st, 2021. Any questions on the change of status? We have the minutes for December 9th, 2021. Councilperson Barnhart was not present, he was in the lone state of Texas. And we also have the minutes of the legislative summit, so entertain a motion to approve those minutes or...
First, I have a correction, even though I was not at the meeting.
They had you here?
Yes.
Oh, is that right?
No, they had the very last thing. Councilperson Barnhart made a motion to recess the December 4th.
Well, we just used your name, Jim.
I have no idea who recessed, actually recessed it, but I know it wasn't me.
Somebody did.
I think there's another, a minor correction, or Councilman Delie reported that he was unable to attend the Amos Authority meeting, that should have been...
Right, right.
But somebody was having a little difficulty on that one, man.
All right, so you want to...
With the corrections, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the corrections, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I would...
You know what I mean, you're not even here and they still think you're here.
Yeah, well...
That's pretty darn good.
Sometimes we don't know you're here when you're here.
Kind of makes up for it then, doesn't it?
It's all easy now, isn't it, you're saying?
No, we're saying the lights are on, but nobody's home.
I agree to that.
All right, the county will be shutting down today at Lunestown and be closed on Friday to observe Christmas. And next Thursday, they'll be closing at noon time on the 30th and be closed on Friday, the 31st to observe New Year's.
Mr. President, I have nothing for your agenda next week, so I didn't know whether you wanted to meet.
Everybody's on vacation.
Everyone's on vacation, we won't have a sort of a home, so...
All right.
Got a couple meetings on Monday.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted to cancel your meeting for next week or not.
Um, yeah, I'd say if something comes up, we can just do it, but we'll just cancel. Everybody in agreement for that?
How come my calendar has the 27th, has the landmarks and the water board?
Well, you're on the council calendar.
Doug does too.
Okay, I didn't hear Doug mention it.
I haven't, that's because I'm on the county council calendars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're jumping ahead.
Sorry, either that or you're slow.
All right, no, we're discussing about next week's meeting. All right, so everybody's in agreement, we won't have a meeting next week then. All right, boards and commissions for, actually, December, the 27th at 1:00 p.m., you have historical landmarks still on the calendars and 5:00 p.m. the Water District. The following week, on the 3rd of January, you have 6:00 p.m. Planning Commission, 5:00 p.m. Sewer District, 6:00 p.m. Stonewater. Any changes or corrections on those? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hesse, you have a little bit of action for us here this morning?
Little bit, I don't know.
I got, I don't know which one's first, I didn't get to look at the...
The three personal property tax exemptions due to officer error.
Yes, I do. And they're all for taxpayer, they were double billed, all three of them, they add up to $457.42.
All right, entertain a motion on the three personal property tax exemptions due to officer error.
So moved.
Got a motion on Florida, a second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now you have an application of consolidation of one property.
I do, yeah, for, there's four parcels that, in Martsburg District, and they were, consolidate them just to get one bill, and I don't have the city market.
Yeah, city market.
And that's the only I have for consolidation.
All right, entertain a motion on the application to consolidate the property for the city market.
We approve the consolidation of property for the city market.
Now, a motion on Florida, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hesse.
So there's no meeting next week?
No.
Okay.
You all have a good holiday.
You too. Thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart?
I had no board meetings, I don't know why, it's Christmas week, I think I have one.
Yeah. Mr. Delie?
Um, I'm looking back here.
Do I freshen myself?
Yeah, trying to refresh myself, I did have an airport meeting, although I'm not the liaison. Didn't have a whole lot going on there, that was it.
All right, Mr. Whitaker?
At a Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting, I didn't get into the Zoom call until it was almost over, but from the, from what I was in the report on, everything seems to be on the positive side. COVID still plays a part in our ridership, but on demand, I think it was increased a little bit from the last meeting.
What do you do with some architectural drawings and all that stuff?
Yeah, it's out on the, I think it's out for an RFQ.
For the drawings?
For the drawings.
Engineering stuff?
So they'll be, we'll get them back in and then they'll hopefully go through the process of reviewing them and get something on the table for more positive building, so.
All right.
Then from that one, I had a airport authority meeting, which I did attend in person, the, The, again, it was by surprise, I think, that the charter ship is up, the school or the flight school is up. On the hours, fuel flow is down just a skosh on the Jet A, but up on the hundred octane low lead. The budget is on the positive, we're to the good of about fifty-four thousand dollars, I think is what I read. Then after that, we had our foundation meeting and started discussing partially with the birthday celebration, the fireworks and the airshow, so it was a very good meeting.
Are we thinking like a weekend event out there?
We're thinking Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, music, bands throughout the festivities of the day for the four. But yeah, there'll be quite a few events that's coming up.
Good, good, Mr. Gokena.
Just had planning commission on Monday, had three public hearings of minor detail really. Had a replant of two different sections of townhomes at the lakes of Martinsburg. The rewrite for the subdivision regulations is going very well. The only thing that they're working on right now to get finished up is actual planner and engineers' comments themselves. So I asked that, once his draft is made available, that we send it back out again for additional comments, so that, just so that we can get another, another bite at the apple to make sure that we've got some buy-in and support of this document. And that's, I think I'm pretty sure that's what we'll end up doing.
I would think that they want to wait until the planning, new planning director would be part of it, is that what you're thinking too?
Well, that was really not part of the conversation, I mean, I would be honest with you, staff has picked up, like, there's really...
Cool, good.
I mean, they've, they've just kept rolling.
Yeah.
Staff there does very good.
There were some comments that, that was given to them, I don't know how that was put into place yet or not, but we'll...
How recent?
Month ago?
Oh, they've been addressed then, I'm sure, that's what I said.
In fact, the ones that submitted the comments, I think, were invited in to meet with the committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, we're just trying to, you know, trying to get, get buy-in for it, that's all, basically. The Parks and Rec, I put a draft of the strategic plan on your desk this morning for review. And also at our meeting, there was a discussion about a skate land, a skateboard park out at Oatsdale. So there was a presentation held on that, along with the...
That'd be a good place for it.
Yeah, there's concern about the parking, you know, because of the Little League, sometimes how it's...
Well, the city's got that, what, eight acres there yet for expansion?
Yeah, that's kind of where they're looking at.
Okay.
Do you own the skateboard park too?
It's on private property.
It's at church, doesn't it?
I, I would think so, but it's on their own private property. They would, they would like to go ahead and, and get a true track built, you know, that they may even have some events there, you know, eventually have some competitions or exhibitions and...
That's good, because I got a phone call from Mrs. Stunt about that, she really concerned about that because she, you know, knows it's a good escape for a lot of people.
Yeah, typically, they say that there's approximately thirty folks a day at this site throughout the day. And, and the gentleman that made the presentation, he's, he's well versed in skate and the necessary...
I know they used to have, had one out there at the old package shed on Kelly Island Road there for a while, it just didn't go over, but if, you know, this one at Oatsdale, or if they do do it at Oatsdale, that would be a good spot.
Yeah, that one out there, as far as children was concerned, you had to have a ride to get there.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, whereas in town, you know, they could, they could ride their skateboards or bicycles or whatever.
When I lived in town till I was twelve years old, we never had a ride, it was walk, ride bicycles or run.
And the only other thing was, which you're aware of, you and I were on W R and R the other one.
Yeah, 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 that's the only thing I had, was on R and R with Eddie and mainly, they talked a little bit about Alakat Allies and we spoke our, our peace of mind on that. But it was a good, good show, short show, but that was on Tuesday, so other than that, don't have, I don't have anything to report on either. Any action on the boards of commission vacancies? Mr. Davis, you want to go ahead and take care of your business?
Yes, sir, you'll find in your packet as a follow-up to your discussion of last week, proposed policy I C seventeen, which is the mobile food vendors on county property policy. I did make a few minor changes that the council suggested. I also added under section D, processes, procedures and guidelines, bullet point thirteen and fourteen, which states if approved, the mobile food vendor will be allowed to operate at the designated location for a period of six months. And then number fourteen, county council reserves the right to terminate the mobile food vendor's right to operate on county property at any time and for any reason. I also developed for your review, an application to operate a mobile home or mobile, mobile food vehicle on county property that, when we received the request, they would fill this form out and would be put in your packet for your consideration.
Okay. All right, need a motion to approve the mobile vendors' process or application form and criteria for operating a mobile vendor on county property. Policy number I C dash seventeen.
I would like to say that we accepted the recommendation of the county administrator for the operation of mobile home. Mobile food vehicle on county property.
There we are, Beth Midler would be really happy with this today, wouldn't she?
Don't let me say things I shouldn't say. That's on policy I C dash seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, I'm, I'm hoping the Davis and brothers come out with a new song. Yeah, put her in place. All right, Mr. Davis.
The other matter for your consideration has to do with communications assessment and training bid that we received last week. As the council's aware, our grants administrator has been very, very, very successful in obtaining grants, we just received another nine-hundred thousand dollar grant.
Three years, no match.
Day Report Center, three years, no match. She was, she put together, working with the sheriff, Berkeley Fire and Emergency Communications, proposal to do communication assessment and training for our public safety personnel, about a hundred and thirty-three employees total. Again, no match, a hundred percent funded. The only bid that was received last week was from Sexton Business Navigation Specialist, doing business as the Institute of Leadership Development. As we look through the packet, has done a lot of this training and certainly meets the criteria set forth in the R F P. Therefore, we're recommending that the communication assessment and training bid be awarded to Sexton Business Navigation Specialist in the bid amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is within the parameters of the bid that was approved by the Department of Justice.
Entertain a motion on the boarding bid for the communication training to Sexton?
Sexton Business Navigation Specialist.
So moved.
Have a motion on Florida, have a second? Second, any discussion on that?
Just down here where it says West Virginia contractors' numbers, is that their vendor's number?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Because that's, what would be a contractor's number, what?
Yeah, that's their, that's not a, not their... Their business number.
And this training should help in hopefully reducing our, our liability threat in the field, it will, I think.
Question?
No, I was going to make a statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's kind of a, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Isn't it amazing that people can do all kinds of work in the state of West Virginia, but there's only one person half the hour that goes to a test, other than P E's and lawyers and stuff like that? That the contractor has to get a contractor's license, got more to do with accounting and legal stuff than it does the actual work. It just blows my mind. But anyway, Mr. Davis, you have, you want to go ahead and get into that?
We want to discuss the bid that we, that we still don't have. As the council is aware, in early November, we received notification from the West Virginia State Auditor's Office that this is our annual bid, our annual audit, twenty-twenty-one audit. Our R F P number was twenty-one dash two oh three. We developed the R F P, we put it out for bid, it was distributed on November fifteenth, and this is a little different than most of the other bids that we do, only because you have to be on the list of approved CPAs in order to bid on it. So there was no need to, to place the class one legal ad. It was, the R F P was distributed to all thirty-two of the approved CPAs on the auditor's list. The bids were due no later than Wednesday, December the eighth. Before the bid deadline, we received ten notifications from CPA firms declining the bid. Either we were too big, the, one of the reasons that we've heard is we, we have more grants, more federal grants than any county in the state. Which requires a single audit, what they call a single audit audit, which is a little bit more complex, but of course, we, we pay more for it. And then we also found that a lot of audit firms are still working remotely, so they're not traveling, so they wouldn't be able to come and do the sampling. So we worked with the State Auditor's Office at their direction, we put it out, back out for bid, mailed it to the twenty-two remaining CPA firms on the list. The bid, the bid deadline was four o'clock yesterday, and once again, we received no bids, but we, we did receive four additional letters declining the bid. So I have been working with Catherine Hodge, who's in charge of the audit unit for the State Auditor's Office, actually called me, I mean, Councilperson Delia was, was in the office. The auditing, the auditor's office puts out two, two bidders lists, one in the fall and one in the early, early calendar year. So what they're going to do is cancel R F P twenty-one dash two oh three. As it exists, they're going to put us back on the new list, which is being published in January, so we'll have a brand-new audit number. They are adding additional firms, apparently, we're not the only one that's having problems finding an auditor, auditor to do the audit. They added additional auditing firms, including Period Associates, which has done our audit for the past three or four years. And they're going to allow us to go back out on the street in January. Same R F P, different R F P number, and just changed the deadline, and she wanted to know if that was okay with us, and I told her as long as the auditor's office didn't fuss at us for just having our audit done at a timely manner, it was, it was fine, so. We have no, we have no audit, or no bid.
All right. All right.
I did have, I'm sorry, I have to digress, but I had one other report to give. I did attend the West Virginia Court Conference for the quarterly board meeting of the West Virginia Court. The, the one thing that was kind of interesting about it is that insurance companies that are in state of West Virginia every so many years, they have that what's called a market conduct report done on their business, making sure that they are getting out their letters, making contact with the claimant and making sure that all their documents are, are in time to man are getting out. Because we are self-insured county risk pool, there's no, I asked Chris Carey about it, have we ever been in a market conduct report? He says, it's funny you should ask, he says, the state doesn't know how to give us one. He says, because we're, we're a different animal. And he says, so we're, we're in the process of teaching each other about how this market is working it through, and I just thought that was a little bit interesting that, you know, because of somebody thinking outside the box for the county's risk pool, it's making everybody really rethink again on, on how business is being done on the county side.
Yeah.
But that was, but the risk pool is in very good financial condition. We are, our surplus is growing, we are, they, they started the, on workers' comp, the call-in numbers, where they're going to have like a merchant person on staff that the claimant can call into immediately and then start the process if they have a workers' comp meeting, so. That's coming up, but that was, that was the other thing, but other than that? Sorry, I have a digress on that.
Did Vivian strike, was she there?
Yeah, she was there.
Yeah.
Actually, that was, it was, it was good to see everybody, it's in the first meeting we've had in person in over a year, so it's worked out pretty good.
Good. I did have something else to report on, we do have a birthday that was last week, this past weekend, right, Mr. Delia?
Yeah, a monumental, sixty.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Man, you look every day.
Thank you.
Sixty years old.
Sixty years old.
Sixty times around the sun.
Yep, yep, hang on, we're going again. Making another trip.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Yep, it was a good, it was a good, it was a good day.
Was it Sunday or Monday?
Uh, Sunday.
Sunday.
That's what Jackie said.
Went to, Saturday, went to, me and a couple buddies, went to Jack Rose down in D C Bourbon Bar, had somebody drive us.
Right, right.
Did that, and then, and Sunday, my wife sneaked in, the whole family out at Bavarian, she said, your daughter wants to buy you lunch, I was like, okay, well, went out there, informed my daughters, everything out there.
Good.
Yeah, it was fun.
My father-in-law will be ninety-six on Christmas Day.
Is that right?
Yeah, ninety-six.
Good for him.
Yeah.
And his wife is ninety-five, married for seventy-four years.
Oh, my.
He's still, still doing very good.
I love, I love to sit...
Happy birthday, Meredith.
I love, I love to sit with people like that and just listen to the stories and the things they talk about, you know, talk about this area in Burke County.
He wrote a book a couple of years ago.
Well, Bob Butler, you choose to lie around with him and talk to him and have lunch and breakfast and, you know, listen to all the, all the amazing stories about running a milk route when he was a kid and, you know, the...
Had to get that milk to the dairy on time.
Yeah, about, about the roads and the population and, you know, it's just crazy to think about, you know, he used to talk about the road going out, going out, was it Tuscula? It all was like a canopy tunnel that he went through with all the trees growing on the road.
I'm sure.
Yeah, kind of crazy. Kind of crazy.
Maybe for the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday, that, that needs to be like a panel with the elders of Burke County, that you could go in and hear their stories.
Oh, that'd be nice.
That would be, have, have coffee with the elders.
Have them just sit there and talking about what goes on.
Jackie's grandmother then to be a hundred, and she would talk about the pool that knocked the small locomotive off the railroad tracks one day, going into Thornwood.
Wow.
Yeah.
She was mad.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was just something to talk about, as a matter of fact, she was, I think W B U wanted to come in and talk to her about that thing.
He had the stories about Burke Street, you know, coming in to Burke Street was a, was the main street in town.
Yeah, because that was the town, on High Street and Liver Street and all that stuff, that was it.
Yeah, that was High Street, yeah. And it used to be the toll gate. And it used to be the toll gate.
A toll gate.
Yeah, used to be a toll gate.
Toll House.
Yeah, Toll House.
The Toll House got its name.
That was a, that was a toll gate there?
Toll House, yeah.
Huh.
Yeah.
That used to be a hangout.
Had the best, best rookie sandwiches I've heard in there.
Oh, wow. We just went up there, got a big town and stuff like that, and then you had one down there on John Street too, John Porter Avenue, little store there. Back then, they'd sell you cigarettes, didn't they?
I didn't know that.
Cause I got my butt wet for doing it.
There was the old pokey dot out there at the Northern Mountain. Sell us beer, cause you're cold as the wall and all this stuff. We used to go in there, buy beer for the baseball team.
Is that out there by the, uh, where the old brickyard was?
Yeah.
Yeah, Doc said he, he would go out there all the time after work.
Yeah, the old pokey dot.
Mm-hmm. Hmm.
Well, I just had the coldest beer in town.
Yeah, well, there's that, and you go in there and get, my, what age you was too, another spot.
Right next to the candy, sell candy. And, and then beer, yeah. So, yeah, how'd you cover?
And right across the street was Ford's Confectionery, we used to walk up there and, uh, penny candy.
They say they're gonna turn down the Rainbow Club down there, the wide and three forty.
Yeah.
They go, so my dad, mom, then they used to go down there and dance to Patsy Cline. So I figured I'm gonna take dad down there one night, eighty six years old.
They redid that movie, they spent a lot of money on it, they couldn't make that movie, they spent a lot of money on there.
Did it?
Yeah. Redid the whole thing.
Huh. All right, well, it looks like we have everybody from the sewer district, is that right, Mr. Keller? Everybody gonna be here?
Uh, I think John Myers is still there.
John Myers, all right.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
Same group.
Stormwater, Stormwater District, I'm sorry, Mr. Rowe.
I'm just concerned we prepared for the little.
Now, that's gonna be the next meeting, it'll be the sewer and which, you know, it just, just talk a little bit. Uh, the main reason today, to just get with everybody, talk about, you know, what's been going on over the last, since it's been, uh, adopted the fee and all that stuff. We had the modified permit, we've been kept up to speed, but no one in the public has been kept up to speed. So wanna know, you know, where we're at, where we're heading, um, you know, we've, we've been talking, just let you all know, we've been talking about the makeup of the board, we said that we was gonna change the makeup of the board, we was gonna put the same board members of the sewer district on for storm because of the, all the stuff that went, went through. So we're gonna start working on that. Um, but, um, other than that, just bring us up to speed on everything and where we're heading. I know that we've been working up some things on the ordinance and stuff like that and where the credits are gonna be, what they, what, if anybody has any idea what they're gonna look like and everything. Is what we're looking for. So whoever wants to lead the conversation.
Sure, I'll be.
He's eager.
Um, let's give you a little handout here, this is just a brief breakdown of, uh, the grants that we've been able to, to get to help some of the issues that we've found in the county that we know are out there and there's certainly many more than
Right.
than what we've, uh, got here.
All right.
Um, so, you know, we've, we've been working, working hard, um, you know, we've been up here and we had, had discussions about, uh, the permit and modifying that area, so we've kind of been through those, some of those discussions with you. Kind of where that stands right now is it's, it's on hold, um, and you, as you, as we discussed, uh, our council is working on the rewrite of the Stormwater Ordinance. Um, just did get an update this morning, um, hopefully, uh, there'll be a draft by the end of January. We'll be able to discuss and look at, uh, how that impacts, you know, Stormwater District and the county from the Engineering and Planning Department as well. Uh, we had that discussion before when that draft, individual permit came out was, you know, about MOAs, MOUs, how that would work. I think the, the goal was at that time to get that Stormwater Ordinance, uh, drafted, so it didn't, didn't have to have any of those, um, types of provisions in place. So that's kind of hopefully what we'll get to, uh, we'll be able to present to you here in the world for a month.
Uh, Mr. Keller, I think there's been some, um, I, I think that, I, I know we've had some discussions as a county council and the Stormwater District and Engineering Department stuff, we, sometimes we, we agree to disagree on some minor things. So part of this rewrite will be to try to get everybody on the same page or try to understand, I mean, it, it, Brian, I know Brian's not part of the Stormwater District, right, but he's also part of the engineering, he, he is the Engineering Department, so in the county. Are we planning on trying to understand each other a little bit better on some of that stuff?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think that's, that's been our goal along is, uh, you know, we wanna work together, you know, we're trying to facilitate, you know, projects getting through and making sure they're, they're getting what they need. But I think our focus has been on the permit side, kind of making sure that, uh, you know, when those regulators come looking at us and they look at these projects, you know, we can, we can peremptively show them that, yes, we are meeting what the requirements of permits are. And I think that's kind of where we've had some of those, uh, I guess misunderstandings or just trying to, trying to work out, um, you know, what it means from the county, from the planning and engineering standpoint, what it means from us from the permitting standpoint. So, yeah, I, I really expect that to, to kind of get, get worked out and, uh, you know, I know that, that Brian and the departments up here know what their, what their struggles are. We know what our struggles are, so we'll work through those and make sure.
And mapping stole, impervious areas stole well?
We got the impervious area mapping, uh, as I mentioned to you before, uh, we worked with Gary and, uh, Frasier was able to get that to us, we got it a couple of weeks ago. So kind of what that will do is that will facilitate, um, our ability to take that information, develop a new fee structure that is based on that impervious area. Instead of just having the, the flat fee, uh, I know you guys are familiar with what the city of Martinsburg did, you know, it'll be very similar to that type of situation. You know, so it will, um, kind of even out some of the, the, I guess, the burden. You know, I know that when we were implementing the fee, some feedback we got was from residential customers wanting to know why they were paying three dollars and fifty cents a month in the same as P and G or Walmart or whoever. So, you know, that, that certainly will, will.
Sometimes the difference is that they spent millions and millions of dollars on Stormwater quantity and quality that they don't get credit for, I would think, some of it, right?
Yeah, that, that will be looked at in the development of, of that fee. And I know that you've mentioned credits and, uh, you know, we will, I don't know that we have an idea at this point what those look like, I mean, we, we have certainly, uh, other areas that we can look to that have done credits and what they look like and see how they fit for us. You know, our, our area is a little bit different because we are county, you know, a lot of these Stormwaters are in the urban areas, so some of the stuff that they can give credit for may not make a lot of sense for us. So we'll have to, we'll have to sift through those and try to, try to pick the ones that, that make sense.
Well, I would think that the county could also give credits for something that the city's not able to give credits for, you know, like, uh, um, small retention areas, you know, it's almost impossible to do that in most of the housing in South City.
Sure, sure, I mean, there'll be definite trade-offs, um, you know, like you said, there's a lot, lot of impervious area in the, in the urban areas that, you know, you just can't get anything. It, it is all, you know, hard pipe or, or, or curb and gutter where it, and, and some of our areas, it's more of an open ditch and we have opportunities for, you know, small bio-retention areas that will are bigger, bigger help than just piping it somewhere and trying to deal with it and hold it and, you know, plus some type, type of treatment at a, at a larger scale.
I think one of the things I've always talked about Curtis is what our Engineering Department is, is the five thousand square feet of, of impervious area and we're still trying to figure out where that came from. I know D E P says it's not theirs and, uh, I've heard about it and we put it in, it's part of our subdivision ordinance, I think. So we need to, so the subdivision ordinance is being rewritten, your all stuff is being done. You're looking at a modified permit, are we trying to, to, to make sure, I know that you're probably with your new write-up of the ordinance and the fee structure would probably tie right in with the, hopefully with the modified permit, I would think, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's one thing that we do need to make sure that is clarified is that, you know, whether it's Stormwater Ordinance, subdivision ordinance, or permit, they're all at least speaking the same minimum requirements.
Right.
Now, you know, of course, you know, if any, anybody wants to have a higher, higher enforcement level than, or higher restrictive level, they're gonna do that. Like you said, I think there is some disjointedness between some of those things, you know, trying to get that worked out is.
I've always been, I've always been fond of a percentage. I know it's a little bit more calculations on the applications and stuff, but I can understand five thousand square foot of impervious area on a townhouse lot. But if you turn back around, you have twenty seven acres and you have, you know, twenty thousand or forty thousand square feet of impervious area, could you put in a, a half mile long driveway?
Right.
And it's, and it's not right up against the property line of your adjoining neighbor. Shouldn't be the same criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
Verbally, and, and sometimes it's not looked at as being the same, but on paper it is.
Right, right, and, and I think there, there probably is a way to look at that and, you know, if there is some type of like that, try to adjust it based on
Or credits, right? Could be done by credit.
It probably depends on where that is and how it's done, you know what I mean? I mean, if you, if you got a, if, you know, if you got a two thousand foot road or something, but it runs right along a creek, you know, it's more susceptible to, uh, runoff into the creek and not filter as opposed to if it's in the middle of the field, you know? So it probably, it probably depends on how that, how that.
Yeah, but if you're a creek and you're long creek, then you got more fertile ground to open up, not just daisy.
Might, might.
Right? Better than that mountain ground. Um, yeah, I mean, Mr. Jim Moore, when he was in here at one day complaining about his fee and, and he was telling us about all the money that he's put in and into his farm and, you know, rotation, uh, rotation of, uh, of pasture land and the ponds and the fences and stuff like that, made absolutely sense. He, he would like to seen something done that day, unfortunately, weren't able to do that, but, um, that's a prime example of someone that's deserving us some credits. Um, so.
You know, makes complete sense, that's for sure.
Yeah. Um, well, and, and obviously, I mean, in a joking way, now's the time to do anything with the, all the heat the city of Martinsburg gonna get their rate.
Yeah, yeah, it seemed like they, they had surprisingly little, uh, opposition or any
Comments, right?
Comments about what they were, what they were doing. We discussed in our board meeting, kind of surprised, kind of really put under the radar.
Yeah, yeah. Um, all right, I told you earlier on, one of the things we talked about was the board members being, uh, part-time for about a year, that year's already passed and stuff, so the council is talking about starting to do a rotation. I'd see all the board members are here, um, at, about trying to, to do what we said we've gone to do and fulfill our obligations and, um, I'm sure you, you guys are being relieved of that some. I'm sure you guys were volun- volunteered for that, but, but, uh, probably not absolutely willing to do it. But, uh, so we're working on that, trying to, trying to do some things with that, just to give you heads up on, on where we're going. The modified, modified permit, uh, where, what phase is that in? And I know it was kind of pulled and then it's gotta be re-applied for, is that right?
Yeah, and the, the key, one of the keys for that would be that Stormwater Ordinance, once it gets done. And we're still waiting for that, you know, kind of in that negotiation discussion about pulling that individual permit was going back to the general permit and they finally did agree that that area could be reduced under the general permit. That general permit still has not been reissued, so we can't reapply for that new, uh, registration under that.
And that's been, that's been the holdup has been D E P, right?
That's the, that's on D E P, yeah, I mean, that's, they've extended that general permit, it's probably been extended for over, over a year at this. So I think the word that is, is that they plan to get that out. Uh, I know there was some, some back and forth between D E P and E P O for how that was written, some of that language. My, I'm not privy to that, but I think they're, they're, they're getting that worked out and we've been told that hopefully here in the spring that that general permit will get, uh, reissued.
So what are you thinking at all this stuff with timeline about whenever? It's all gonna, like we said, it's all gonna go down about the same time, I hope.
It would probably be close in timing, um, you know, the ordinance will have to go through whatever process, you know, once we get a, a document that says, here's what it is, we agree on it, you know, we've kind of gotta go through your process to, to get that, get that approved. I don't know what kind of that timeframe is on that. Um, you know, permit, it's just a matter of, of applying for that registration and how quickly then D E P can turn that around.
Is that something you do in-house or is that something that you subcontract out to apply for that permit?
We would do that in-house, I mean, we, we have, we would probably have some consultants, some of our consultants help us maybe with that, but it's not, I mean, we kind of have all that framework in place now. It's kind of our Stormwater Management Plan that we're working from. And it'll be the, pretty much a lot of the same stuff that we have usually submitted for that individual. It'll be, a lot of that work is already done, or just have to be some refinement based on what we end up with.
How's that relationship working back and forth with, uh, D E P right now and E P A with what you guys have been doing?
Um, seems to be okay, um, of course, our filings were done last, I guess it's actually been about a month ago. I believe our thirty day comment period officially ends, uh, tomorrow. To our knowledge, there have been no comments on the consent decree. Unless there's a compelling, uh, deadline for, for that to get entered prior to December thirty first, will probably be first of the year. But then, you know, the timeline kind of starts on everything in that, in that period. So, yeah, I think at this point, uh, it's been, been going okay. Once that goes in place, we'll have regular semi-annual reporting that we have to do. You know, in relation to that, make sure we're hitting their milestones and keep everything up to date. Said on Stormwater side, we're pretty good on, on sewer side, you know, we've, we've started a lot of projects as, Councilperson Hook and Aaron know from sitting interviews, we've got some of that, that work being done right now. So we feel pretty good with where we're at, um, you know, been, been able to get some of those projects done and knocked out. Be able to bring consultants on and get some of the preliminary work done that'll help cut down some of those.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns or statements to the board, Mr. Curtis, Kelly?
Mr. President, you, you've had conversations with the water, water authority about expansion and capabilities for future growth. I don't know if you want to.
Well, we can talk about that briefly now since it's the same makeup and we are talking to the director of the sewer district. But one of our concerns right now, we have a huge amount of people, and Mr. Rowe and I talked a little bit about it on the water side. Uh, we have a lot of activity of, of businesses wanting to come to Burke County and it's getting to the point on the water side that where we don't have the availability of water possibly. What's your availability on the sewer, uh, right now? What's into the county or where can, can you afford growth? Um, and right now, it's, it's anywhere up and down the eighty one corridors are hot. I mean, it doesn't matter what's in West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Maryland or Virginia. I mean, it just, you know, people are, sad to say, are leaving commercial retail and they're, they're doing a lot of stuff online and, and for some reason, people wanting to come back to the United States and start doing the industrial business, which is good. So what's your capacities for industrial business in, on your sewer side?
Um, you know, we upgraded our four major plans, probably the one that has the least amount of tests. Um, you know, we upgraded our four major plants. Probably the one that has the least amount of test is the one. It has been, been our smallest, um, you know, it, but it also has the most developed area around it. So it doesn't have a lot of, I guess, empty ground for expansion. Probably we're best suited at our north area plant out on Travel Road. We have the most of the best. The Inwood is, is okay and Baker Heights is okay. I know we've had some discussions for about, we've had some disagreements with DEP over the percentage of industrial flow versus domestic flow at our facilities.
Meaning, meaning that they want more industrial or less industrial?
Well, there are limits that we have to, when we take on an industrial user, somebody who is discharging a significant volume of industrial waste. Depending on what that is, there are certain limits on what they can discharge us based on water quality criteria, what the plant can treat. So those are, are, are limiters for us on industrial type of growth. So tho- those are all kind of site-specific.
Some of those have onsite treatment plants, would they not, or not pre-treatment?
Some of them do have pre-treatment. Most of those people do not get it down to nothing at that point.
Right.
The, the goal is to try to get any of that non-domestic waste down to domestic stream.
Okay.
But there are, you know, from the, from the organics side, via the TSS and ammonia, that those are pretty easily achievable. As some of the other metals in, in organics that become a bigger issue and have a limit on what can be sent to the plant, what can be treated.
I thought, I thought there was some concerns in, in recent letters going back and forth of, of capacity, needing increased capacity. Don?
No, I mean, I think in this, you know, I'll go back, you know, 15, 20 years, whenever we started talking about the Chesapeake Bay stuff. There is, there is a finite amount of capacity as it relates to nitrogen phosphorus. So, um, you know, that would be, be the ultimate limitation of what our capacity would be even with additional expansion. You know, you take, for instance, our current, one of our current facilities, you know, it may be a 2 million gallon a day facility, and that's what it's rated for for its nutrient load. We throw that out, we could probably handle maybe three and a half, four million gallons a day under a, just a conventional secondary type of discharge. You know, we do have a lot of flexibility that we've found in the system to be able to treat to the lower limit, limits on nitrogen phosphorus in order to get to, uh, the possibility of, of having a higher rated capacity. But there, there is, you know, that, that's always going to be out there. And we've talked to the state, we've worked through the legislature, and there's supposed to be a trading program in place, but that's never been, been done. You know, and one thing we talked about, now several years ago when we started talking stormwater and sewer, was the potential for getting nitrogen phosphorus credits from some stormwater activities and trading back there. Right now, we need nutrient capacity that we don't have the capability of internally moving between our facilities. We have to buy credits somewhere in order to get that.
So it sounds like, it sounded like you, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on you. It sounds like your statements are kind of more, kind of in general of where we're at. With, uh, with knowing, uh, with knowing what our growth has been for the last several years, I'm thinking, are, are we around the 60% that is going, um, on sewer at this point, or do you know where that percentage is? And if you know where that percentage is, where does that put us five, 10 years down the road with expansions and continued growth? I mean, have, have we been looking at those numbers with residential side?
I mean, from a residential standpoint, I don't think we're, I think we're in, in, in pretty good shape. You know, it's the unknowns of, you know, somebody like a P and G that comes in and says, I need 500,000 gallons a day. I mean, that's, you know, take 500,000 gallons a day from them versus, you know, 100 gallons a day for a residential house. Or we can do the math to know that for every, for every P and G we get, we get so much more for residential.
Well, we're logging, I mean, well over a thousand new addresses a year now. So what's our, what's our sustainability to continue that pace before we have to be looking at doing some of these, um, things you're talking about? Uh, credit expansion, that type of thing.
Yeah, actually, it's been about 1,400 for the last three or four years now, per, per year. Just, and I think one of the things, we've got to make sure that we, everybody understands what's going on. Make sure the engineering and planning is talking to you, you guys in the water district. Uh, I know Mr. Rowe has always said, you know, we never want to fall behind on water and sewer. And then, then we get faced with the COVID stuff and now we've got a supply problem and you can't even find pipe, you got to. So, yeah, so at 1,400 houses per new addresses per year, you still feel comfortable on the residential side? But I know that there could be a possibility of talking about 4 million gallons of water a day too, that we need.
Right, and, you know, and a lot of that doesn't, 4 million gallons of water won't translate into 4 million gallons.
Correct.
Take somebody like P and G.
They're 1.3?
Their discharge is probably, you know, 40 to 50% of what they're watering.
Right. I think they're what, 1.3 million now, Mr. Rowe?
No, they're still buying ground.
1.1? Yeah. So, and their discharge is saving about.
Between 400 and 500,000 gallons.
Yeah, 40 to 50%. Okay, all right.
The residential is a lot easier to predict than, you know, somebody coming in and saying, hey, you know, we, we bought this property. We're going to put this manufacturing facility here. That, those are the big problems. You know, the bigger warehouses that are.
Not a big problem.
It's not a big problem because they're, I mean, you're talking domestic waste.
Right.
For the number of employees. So you're talking, post-op lab seem to be in 10, 20,000 gallons a day, so.
But we understand, you know, the big warehouses and stuff is a necessity with the people that we have in the county. But at the same time, we'd much rather see industrial that creates 600 to 800 jobs rather than warehouses that creates 100 and some jobs.
Well, in, in the.
As in the rate of pay?
Yeah, the pay scale is much, much better and helps the economy.
Right, I mean, we, we like a bigger customer too, uh, you know, like, but that does pose the limitations, you know, whatever the discharge. I mean, if it's a fairly mild type of industrial waste, that certainly is a lot easier to handle with somebody like P and G. It's, uh, you know, they're making some, some heavy cleaners and the best, and strong chemicals that they use in the process.
And that's why there's a percentage on industrial and residential because it dilutes, right? I guess.
Yeah, ideally, um, you know, one of the things that you've got to look at too is, is your biology in your plant does much better with the organic that you get from the domestic waste, a lot of the inorganic stuff that you get from the industrial. You've got to try to keep that balance there. Make sure you're getting the biology right to get the, get the treatment where.
I think right now, the, the thing that we're looking at from the water side, that there's, there could be issues on, there, there, there's concern. I'll, I'll go that. There's concern about whether if we get new customers coming into Burke County, new businesses, uh, on the water for 2023 and now you have one coming in for 2025. And, and, you know, I can understand that. It's hard to give an answer. As Mr. Rowe and I talked the other day on the phone, Doug's about a supply, you know, talking about the water plant down in the Tumac River. What it does, it's capable now, Greg, 6 million gallons a, a, a day?
The river plant?
Yeah. 6 million, but if the plant's designed for up to like 12 million, but the filtering system is what has to be upgraded, is that right? Okay, and, but, but, you know, in, in a typical time, it would probably have been a year and a half project. But today's world with the supply chain, it could very easily be three years. And we don't want to fall behind that eight ball. That's, that's what we're talking about here.
So what's the, what's the expansion for sewer, um, in the north end? I mean, you, I heard you say it, it was really good shape on the north end right now. But, um, if, if we're talking about that's the, that's the area where.
Where the water is?
Yeah, if, if that's the area where any large water users would have to go, obviously those are going to be, uh, large septic users as well.
Certainly.
Right, so is the, is the expansion, um, and the growth able to keep up with what he's talking about? The, um, uh, the water volume in that area?
I mean, that plant right now is probably operating at 40 to 50% of its capacity. You know, I think we're, I think we're, we're in good shape. You know, like I said, that, that's, that's based on that nutrient load now. We, we have some flexibility to get some additional capacity above that 2 million demonstrated before we've already freed down to the lower, lower limits, so.
So, so at the, at the growth that you've seen in the last three years, four, three to four years, when do you think that you may have to start looking at plant upgrades for capacity? Just a guess.
Abs- absent a big user.
Are you going to?
It'd be as short as five, as far out as 10 or more.
Okay.
Depending upon the, the facility.
What happens if you get some users that would produce? I'm not, I don't know. There's no big industrial that I know that's going to do something like P and G's doing. There may be somebody like Clorox or somebody like, uh.
Clorox even to us is not, they're not industrial.
Right.
Like I said, it's all going to be dependent upon which plant you go to and what that volume.
Okay.
So what about the south end then? So it sounds like you're pretty good, solid on the north end.
And in the north end, it's been growing the biggest fastest, really. I mean, from the residential side, the north end grows the fastest.
I understand, but that's not what's going to happen if, uh, there's a, there's an opportunity for a, a plan for a new plant, um, replacement down on the south end and expansion down there. So once you do that, as soon as you do that and put the pipe in and have the availability, I think you're going to have the, the growth on the south end, uh, as well. And when that, uh, when that happens, have you looked at the, the volumes, what they're going to be able to increase to on the south end to see what the availability is down there?
Um, not specifically, no. I mean, I think, again, we have excess capacity there. Our, that plant's probably about 50% capacity on an average daily flow right now. So, I mean, one thing that makes it hard for, I'll say for water and sewer is, you know, not knowing where this is. I mean, we can talk zoning till we're blue in the face, but, you know, if you have a plan where you know where certain things are going to be, it's a whole lot easier to plan and try to make projections for than it is, well, you know, there's 1,000 acres here, 400 acres there. And it could be houses or it could be P and G, um, you know, there's so many other variables you have to try to consider when you're trying to, trying to project that out. Any type of certainty.
All right.
No, but if you have 50% down there, obviously you can handle some growth and track that as it moves forward to see what you need to do moving forward. So that, that answers my question. I mean, it's not like you're, you know, 80% down there and, and as soon as you get a surge, you're going to be scratching your head, you know what I mean?
Right. And, and like I said, I mean, that, those rated capacities are based on that nutrient, that annual nutrient load, so.
So if you get those credits that you, that you could have more capacity?
Correct.
Where, where's Baker Heights at? What's about?
It's probably about that same, that 50 to 60, depending on where, where, where P and G is at right now.
Okay.
Regular days.
And Eagle School Road, you said that was the one that has the least?
Yeah, that one's probably between the 70 to 80%.
Okay.
But when you talk about the industrial growth, you know, which, you know, we want jobs, we want, we want good jobs, we want clean jobs. But at the same time, being able to expand the tax base. But if we start encroaching hard upon the sewer districts, we don't want to have to go to the residential rate payers to pay that way.
Right.
So we've got to make sure that, that they're able to carry their own, their own water.
Yeah.
Per se, their weight.
Literally. Yeah, and, and that's, I think we've been, there's been some talk on that, ton of other talk on that, even on the fireboy side right now. One of the things that there, there's talk about because of a lot of the, the ground on the east side of 81 has been gobbled up. There's talk about having to go to the west side of 81. How are you set up to do that?
Um, well, in the central, the north area, we're on the west side. South central and the south side, um, you know, we have some, some engineer plans from years ago. We're going to do that. Yes, we have some, some places where we get to and have some, some engineering plans that are out there that will have to be dusted off and probably have a, a little bit of a look because of the headings.
So basically from exit 12 north, you're, you're crossed on the west side?
Yes.
And from 12 south, you're not?
Well, we, we are, if you go kind of from exit five, a little bit south there, there's a pocket in there.
Okay.
Across.
Is the school out there on 51, is this still on sewer treatment plant or is that on public sewer now?
Uh, we're actually in the process of installing a pump station, of course, maybe to take it off the package plant.
Okay, because I seen them up there working when I went by it yesterday.
Yeah, that's it. That's one of the ones where we want to eliminate the package plant. Place of the pump station development down off of, uh, out of Springdale. We have service out there.
Oh, do you?
So it's made it a lot, uh, more economically feasible to get to, to get to there with that extension.
And all your package plants are starting to do well. Now, I know that was a big burden and headache for you and that's, you know, DEP gave you a hard time on that. Those are pretty well being squared away now?
Yeah, we lopped off, um, our problem ones. Um, you know, most of the ones we have left are, you know, either far enough away that it's not really possible to, to, uh.
Yeah, like probably the woods. I mean, that's a long ways away from here.
Yeah, and, and the woods is one where we're looking at. We're probably going to have to spend some money doing upgrades just because, uh, it was built when, when Mr. Johnson started that development. You know, it's a lagoon system, there's not a lot of control to that and to beat some of those limits that have been tightened up over the years. Really get, get something else there that was been, been, it's probably out of the remaining package plants we have, it's probably out there. Working with our consultants on some options there to upgrade that. Part of the problem with it is, is it's so remote and, you know, getting equipment, concrete trucks and, or cranes and everything down to it.
So overall, it seems like the sewer district's in pretty good shape for future growth. But the only problem is, is that we, we see and we know is if we're thinking that we may need capacity in five years, we better start planning now.
Yeah, yeah. Always that, that look ahead, that needs to be done.
All right. Anything else, anybody? Any board members or anything have anything else to say? Appreciate everything y'all do. You know, it's not a, not a fun position to be in, whether you're the attorney or whether you're a board member. It's, uh, we, we appreciate your, uh, your time. And, uh, I know a lot of you have been on there for, for quite a while and it, it's got to be thick skin sometimes, but appreciate everything y'all do. All right, that's, seems like all the update we need right now. And, uh, y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Always happy to come up and speak for you.
All right.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right. Thank you, Curtis. Do we have anything for executive session?
No, sir.
It's not even on the agenda.
It is not.
Any items for the public? Thanks, if there is none, Mr. Barnhart?
Well, since I'm here, I'll make a motion to the jury.
See you next year.
Have a motion on the floor. Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second. We're all in favor.
Here we go.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Hope you enjoy your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.